Alright guys, let's go ahead and start. It seems like we're gonna. I don't want to keep anybody waiting any longer. I know we are getting a couple of other council members gonna be joining us. But let's, let's go ahead and start. We'll call them into order officially at 5:34 PM. It's a work session of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. We will, what I guess what I'd like to do for starters, just like we did at the last joint meeting that we had. With the rural fire district trustees, wonder if we could just, since we're a small group, probably would be good and helpful for our friends from, from Solon and even for those of us in the room as well to just go do introductions again. I don't think it will take us long if we just go through and just introduce ourselves. And we can start here on the, on the table. And I just want to say welcome from Solon. We're really happy to have, have you here and looking forward to learning from you and your experiences. So after introductions, if we could just turn the mic over to, to you in Solon, if you want to just tell us your, tell us your story, tell us where you were, what you did, where you are now. And you know, we want to learn from your experiences. And then if, if, if you're able to just kind of start with some kind of an overview there, then we'll, I'm sure the room will have a lot of questions and we'll just open it up to the room for, for questions. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure.
Great, perfect. Well, I'm Mayor Ethan Anderson. And if we could just go, council.
Dana Dominguez.
I am council member Ashley Smith.
I wanna.
City manager Lee Gertz.
You guys.
Communication specialist Brittany Woodson.
City clerk finance officer Sherry Cooper.
I'm the police chief Eric Rowland.
You guys care to introduce yourselves?
Fire chief Kurt Second.
Firefighter EMT Erica Christensen.
Assistant chief Tom Christensen, forty years on.
You're here.
Maybe sickle sterbens, secretary treasurer of the fire department. EMT.
My dad's chair, I'm a founder of our ambulance director.
Andy Carter, township trustee.
Dick Moran goes in, goes in township trustee.
Alexia Martinez firefighter.
Oh, fighters.
Blaine Kelly, Western Fire of the U S.
Tammy Wiggum, U S coordinator, hermetic firefighter.
Tammy, I was so in U S.
Brian Graskin, U S.
Great. And who just joined us up here now. Thank you. Greg, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Greg Morris. I'm from Solon. I'm the treasurer of the party department. I've been on thirty-five years there. And I might add, Mayor, I'm, I'm happy for the invite and happy to be here and, and hopefully we can help you guys come to a happy ending.
Absolutely. We're glad you're here. Yeah, thanks so much for coming down. Really appreciate it. We're definitely looking forward to your insights. Could we, could, could you introduce yourself from Zoom? I know that's a little bit awkward, but we'd love to just kind of get to meet you.
Sure. Steve Stang, I'm the mayor. Sorry, I'm not on video, but I'm on an iPad. And I don't want you looking at my ceiling half the time, so. I, I'll let Kami introduce herself and then I'll give you a little background on me.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mayor. Kami Rasmus, and I'm the city administrator here in Solon. And been with the city for twenty-five years, had a variety of titles and roles. And again, we're glad to share whatever insight we can have that will help you guys out tonight.
Excellent. Great. Well, back to you then, Mayor.
Okay, so I was on the, I joined the fire department in nineteen eighty-eight at the age eighteen. And I served for thirty-one or thirty-two years. Just recently got off here in the last four or five. Been on the council since two thousand and six. I did twenty-one or twenty-two years in law enforcement. Twenty of those years was with university police. I worked with Eric for several years. And so my father was on the fire department, was the fire chief at one point. My son's on the fire department now, so I have a very strong history with the fire department. Which I think has helped. We, we had a very good. I would say that when we made this transition, the the relationship between the city and the trustees and the fire department was probably at its healthiest it could have been, which made it a lot easier. If this would have happened in nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen ninety, it would have been a completely different conversation. Greg could probably attest to that. There was a lot of turmoil between the city council and the township trustees. There was there was problems with the city wanting to save money for fire trucks and, and the townships owned most of the equipment. The, the city owned the fire station and one pumper, and then they would split bills and argue over who was gonna pay what and argue over what equipment was needed. And you know, for the most part, we had decent equipment, but it was always a struggle and it was always a battle. And it was always a a turmoil that volunteers did not need. When Mayor Jedlica became the mayor, one of the things he did was convince the council to that they didn't need to be in the fire department business anymore. And they went to the trustees and asked them if they would be willing to contract with, for the city to contract with them. And that's basically what happened was they would, the city would continue to provide the location to house the house the equipment. And then the the trustees would basically manage the operation of the fire service for, for both the city and the township. Then we had an audit where we had some accusations by what we believe was a, a member that we had expelled. At that point, I was the mayor and and the audit auditor basically said that how we were doing it wasn't gonna work and we needed to look at doing something different. And that was either gonna be the city was managing it or we needed to form this agency. And so we looked at, at that forming of that agency. And this is the quick version. And Kami may be able, sorry. Kami may be able to help with that a little bit better. But explaining that more in detail. But, but basically what we decided was is we were going to go ahead and, and proceed with this. And one of the things that we made clear was is that we wanted, no matter where you lived in the district, whether you lived out in the county or in the city, you're, you were gonna pay the same amount for fire protection. And, and that money would all be whether it, the city would pull the taxation and Kami can explain how that's done for the city. And then the township trustees would agree to tax to the millage rate to the max that they could. And all of that money would be brought in to the agency. And that agency had a representative from each township and a representative from the city. And those folks would vote on, would basically manage the day-to-day operation, or the operations of the finances and the management of the fire department, purchasing of fire trucks and, and you know, the, the station up until we had to build a new station is when the city had to get back involved. And we were able to make that work too, which was amazing. I mean, it's, it's an amazing facility. And we pulled that off with getting all of the township trustees, the agency board, the city council, the firefighters and the community all agreeing. I mean, how can you get that many people to say you want to all support this financially? And build that kind of place and not really have much turmoil in getting it done. It was amazing. And I don't think that would have happened if we wouldn't have had this group. So that is the true success of how this group has, has evolved. Now, do we have our challenges? Sure. Will we have our challenges in the future? Absolutely. But I think that proved that we can accomplish whatever we need to do. And at the end of the day, the most important thing is, is that no matter where you are at in our fire district, you're gonna get the best service that we can possibly provide. And our volunteers are gonna get the best equipment that we can provide them, the best training that we can provide them. And the best possible guarantee that we can give them, give their families that they're gonna come home after the emergency. And I think that's the things that you've got to focus on, on those things. If you can focus on getting people home safe, getting them the best equipment that you can afford. And, and all agreeing that you're going to work together to accomplish that, then it'll make the rest of it a lot easier.
Yeah, I'd agree, Steve. And, and easier, really, day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year. And to your point, in nineteen ninety, it was chaos. I, I'll be honest, I was, I was the treasurer for our group, for our firefighter group in, in doing most of the billing. And, and trying to figure out who owned what, we own this and you do that. It was, it was just hard. It was hard monthly to keep things straight and figured out. And maybe more importantly, to keep everybody happy. But the agency format that we're at now has taken all that away. It really has worked very smoothly, really smoothly.
And that's what the auditor had issue with, is that that co-mingling of funds that it needed to be much cleaner. And so that's what this agency solved was the co-mingling of funds and a, a straight financial process. Kami, I'll let, I'll let you talk about the process of how we went about developing the agency and what all went through that.
Sure, thank you. So I guess I first want to set the foundation that the heroes of our community are the Solon Tri Township Fire Department, hands down. The, the, these folks are our neighbors. They're our friends. They're our relatives. And we know the people, when you, when you're in need, when you, when you call, you know the people that are gonna come. And the people that, and, and those firefighters and first responders are just, are just treasure, a treasure of our community. They are loved. They are supported. And so the community support for the, for the Solon Tri Township Fire Department is just off the charts in our community. And it's because they're well-trained. They, again, these are people we know that are responding, you know, when you're at your, in your time of need. This is not about them. This is about, this is about just having some processes that are clean, are accountable to the state auditor's office. And that was really the root of all of this. And, and by the time that audit report came along, we thought we were doing a pretty good job. But they wanted things better. And we turned to a variety of places to help give us some guidance. The state auditor's office isn't gonna tell you how to fix it. They're just gonna tell you to fix it. And so we, you know, we, we had, we didn't know where to turn. Chief Sidell had heard about George Oster, had heard about him helping some other communities. And so we were able to reach out to him and, and, you know, get some, have some work sessions similar to what you're having and just kind of, he kind of framed up the issue for us and helped, helped us see a path and a vision of where we could be. And that really got us on, off to a good start. And, you know, basically it was keeping a, the fire department as a city department, or creating these, an agency or, or some other, you know, versions of, of an agency. And having those examples were helpful. It was, you know, some trial and error, you know, we, we'd wandered down a path and thought, well, what if we did this? What if we did that? The key component to our success was our city attorney and the the county appointed an attorney to work with our city attorney on behalf of the townships. And they did the hard work behind the scenes. They were able to get some framework of some possible formations of an agency so we could get some talking points. There were meetings with the county attorney and the township trustees and the city attorney and the city council. And everybody was able to get their want and wish and needs list on papers and, and be heard. And a lot of that was hashed out behind the scenes between those attorneys. And then when they had some good drafts and examples and some talking points for the group, we come together. We had those meetings monthly over the period of a year. They weren't all pleasant and they weren't all lovey-dovey. But we did have a collective mindset that we had to change. And we, we didn't have really a choice. We had to change. We had to find a better way organizationally to, you know, function as a, as a, as a fire component of this community that satisfied the auditors. And, and again, this wasn't about the firefighters. This was about, you know, accountability from an auditor standpoint. And I'll just share and echo what's, what Steve and Greg have said is, you know, we've made this work, but it's also come with a mindset is we're gonna be better. I think it all turned out better than we even imagined. And the new firehouse is a good example of that.
Yeah. That sounds like a really good process and a good outcome all around. Greg, did you want to share anything?
Yeah.
Please do.
And, and what Steve and Kami will said is that Steve used the word of co-mingling of funds. Well, what happened is that the city was giving our certification money. The trustees weren't ever paying bills. That, that, I, I think I'm right, Kami. That, that's the thing that bothered the auditor the most is, is where and who and what. So now what happens is because of our agency board, our, our command staff, our fire chief, his officers and us as members, we develop a budget, just like we have to deal with as a city, that budget submitted to the board and we adhere to that. It's accountable and it really, that component has made it so much easier for all of us to operate. There, there's not a mindset, well, is the city paying this? Are the trustees paying this? Who's doing what and where are we going? It, it really is streamlined thing. I think the toughest thing for our trustees were ownership. Who owns what? And, and do we have to give ownership up? They did. They owned our rolling stock. The city owned the building. They both came together and said, now it's the agencies.
Yeah.
And it really made things for all of us. First, as a taxpayer, I'm speaking, and as a firefighter, we, we weren't facing brick walls. We knew that we had to make this work and we made it work. And, and I, I think Kami and Steve, it was a little smoother maybe in the end what we thought. And it's worked month-to-month as far as billing goes. The agency meets every other month right now. I think that's right, Steve. And, and as things goes, if you have to meet, you meet, and you need to go quarter by quarter, you can do that too. The other good thing is there's no question about operating expenses and where we're at. There's X amount of dollars a year for us to operate on, for us to save for future purchases. It, it's not like, oh, oh, what are we gonna do now if we have, if we have a mishap? That things are already in line, set up, so we know where we're going, not only for today, but tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, let's open it up for, thank you for this. Great information. And good to hear the story. Let's open it up for, for questions. I'm sure we're gonna have questions about how you're set up and also the process you went through to get it set up. Go ahead, council member.
Great. A couple of things popped up in my mind when you were speaking. So you said that the city gave the building, the townships gave the equipment. What kind of discussion, maybe this is for Kami and, and Mayor too, but what kind of discussions with the council were had to the what-if scenarios? Because that's where we get stuck on, like, what if it doesn't work? And now they own the building? What happens after that?
So I, I think your, your first part of what-if is important. And, and just excuse me for I'm gonna answer this. But if, if we have a bunch of what-ifs, it's never gonna work. It, it is never, I, I don't care where we're at. But one of the most interesting things that I learned through this, I'm not sure there's a fire department in a state of Iowa that operates the same way. We learned that. I think George Oster helped us all understand that. But the what-if thing, in my mind, Steve and Kami can jump into, that was never a, a consideration. Could be because the state auditor told us, you gotta get it figured out.
Well, there, there is what-if language in the, in the charter. And basically, let's say a, we have three townships. If one of those townships decides they no longer want to be in our agency, they can petition to leave the agency. I believe they have to give a year's notice. And I would have to look, Kami, you can look at the charter, but there's a, there's a, there's a formula basically for them to leave, but they, it, it doesn't mean that you sell off everything and the agency dissolves. They, they can leave, but they, and they will get some money, but they're not, they're not gonna get a, a big giant check written and, and the whole thing just collapses. They would have, in order for it to collapse, everybody would have to agree to dissolve it. So there, there is what-if language in there because we had to somewhat, I mean, you know, the what-if language could happen. I'll give you a, for instance, two years ago, the state legislature talked about eliminating township trustees because on the western side of the state, they're not getting anybody to run for township trustees. So they were, they were having issues with that. So they were talking about eliminating it. And then that kind of went to the wayside. But at one point, there was some concern about, okay, what if that happens? What's gonna happen to the agency? I mean, Kami and I had that discussion. So there is language in there for that, if, if that does happen. Kami, can you talk about that a little bit in the charter?
Yep, I can. So I sent a copy of the charter over to Lee. I don't know if you, that was shared with you, but I believe it's on page six. It has the termination and withdrawal language in there. And it does talk about how all the assets will be valued. If, if there is a request to depart from the agency dynamic and, and there's a process of how that's going to be evaluated and, and divided up. One of the things that I think it's important to note here is that we were a city fire department prior to this formation of the agency. And we had to dissolve the fire department. We do not have an organized fire department in our code of ordinance that no longer exists. This agency acts as our, our, meets our requirement to provide fire service for, for our city. Back to the what-ifs, there was a lot of, you know, what-ifs conversations, but we ultimately, and that was helped having those mediators of those city attorneys is that they were able to, to take those and frame those up into a situation. Now, I am going to say that being on the city side of this, I feel like the city probably was the most flexible to make this happen. I think we were the most agreeable. And some would say maybe even too agreeable. But we also knew, we, we knew that it had to happen. And if somebody had to bend, it was probably going to need to be us. So I think there are some that maybe felt we were maybe a little, you know, it was too heavy city, you know, making the compromises, but they were compromises that had to be made. And that was, you know, you know, part of making this, making this agreement become a reality.
Well, and a big part of that was is we owned one fire truck. But the trustees owned the rest of them. So if we were gonna, if we were gonna say, no, we, we weren't gonna make this work, like Greg said, you know, we really didn't have an option to not make it work from a city aspect. Because we couldn't afford to go out and buy, you know, three, three, four million dollars worth of fire equipment. So you know, that, that kind of, like Kami said, we, we had to bend. We, we, we were the ones. The city was the one under the audit. We were the ones that were being forced to have to deal with this. So it was, you know, it was our, it was our problem. And we, and we basically brought the township trustees to the table to help us change. I mean, we, we didn't have a choice. We were going to change. Whether they were coming with us or not, we were hoping they were gonna. And we were gonna make it as easy as we could for them within reason, right? We weren't gonna give away the farm. But I think when you look at the charter, as Kami said, you know, the, the city attorney and the county attorney. And then the agency ended up getting their own attorney after, after the county turned it over. Once the agi, agency was formed, then the city or the agency now has their own attorney. But you know, the, the, the township trustees were represented via the county. The city was represented via the city attorneys. And that took the personnel, personality away from these what-ifs, right? Because you kind of, as a city, when you're wearing the city hat, right? You're, you're trying to protect your interests, right? You're trying to predict or protect what you have invested in your fire station. You guys got a beautiful fire station. And, and the equipment you have invested in it and everything you have in that. And then I don't know how the, how the trustees, what they own or whatever, but they have a vested interest, right? And then you've got the firefighters and they have a huge vested interest. And then, and then they're in the middle of all of that as well. So what, what having people to kind of help you walk through it is it takes some of the the personal grievances out of it and, and makes it so that you can make best decisions for each of your groups and then for the agency. And again, I, I think you've got to, you, you've got to look out for each of your entities. And then you need to remember. And then you need to remember as well that you're providing a service to all of your community and I think that's important to remember as well, so. Again, if you can keep that as your number one goal. And then your number two goal is is, you know, to protect your entities and make sure that. If things do go bad, you have a way that you're just not sitting without service, either one of your groups. So that you have a plan if that would happen. Then I think you're, I think you're good, you know, and that's that's where. Making sure everybody's paying the same amount for fire protection, no matter where you live. It it brings that expense, it it brings that money in so that, you know. It makes it even, so that if somebody wants to leave, it's 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 a fair split. You know. Other question?
Yeah, I have some questions. It looks like we're missing some pages of this document. We're missing pages four, five, and also page seven. And I think that's true in every copy, so it's possible the questions I have are in the agreement and I just can't read them right now. Um one of the questions I have is who appoints and evaluates um the chief of the twenty eighteen agencies?
Our our group votes on, the firefighters vote on the chief and then it is presented to the agency and they approve it.
Has there ever been an instance where like the firefighters voted on a chief and then the agency said, no, we don't approve that?
And I, you can help me out with this, but I believe that before we went to the agency. That person was still voted on and it had to be presented to the city council and they had to approve it.
Okay, and then is there like an annual evaluation or a couple like?
Evaluation is the vote, our vote.
Okay, but like going.
Yeah, so so we 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 have elections. I'm I'm sorry, we have elections every June.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So I I I guess in my mind. Um I understand your question, but the evaluation is done by us. If if we like the person, we vote for him. I would certainly hope you would think that's a good idea too.
Sure, sure, okay.
But yeah, it it it's it's yearly.
Okay. Um uh what happens if somebody litigates the twenty eighty agency? Like, do they have their own twenty E lawyer or what if someone sues because they think they did a bad job? What happens then?
We do have our own attorney. The agency does.
Agency, the agency does.
Not the city attorney, you're not the, okay.
I think you told me who that was, Greg, with uh with left.
But the left law firm in Iowa City, yeah.
Yes, and so to add to that, Ashley, if. Say there's something that comes up and there's an increase in attorney fees for the agency, does the townships and city then split? That additional cost?
So so the agency has an annual budget, whatever that number is. And that would be taken out of that, so so in the trustees' case. They're not gonna be able to come up with any more money because they're probably at the max right now, right? So so that's set. And it maybe the better way to describe it in the end is that that's the agency's responsibility to manage that dollars and cents. So if something like that comes up, they can.
Well, so I'll give you an example. We had a lot of attorney work that needed to be done for the new building. That was all covered by the city. We didn't, we didn't charge the agency to do any of that. Because that wouldn't have got done and it and it needed what it ended up needing to happen in order for us to bond for it. We, it had to become a city structure, right? So. We needed to handle that anyway in order to deal with that, so. You know, we had to make some agreements and and our attorney had to handle that. And so the city covered that cost. You know, that was just in the best in, it was in the best interest of the city. And the cities, it was the best interest of the city to get this structure built. We needed a new firehouse and it wasn't gonna get done. That the cost of the building was rising so fast compared to what we were bringing in for donations. That we would not have gotten the facility we have now if we didn't start moving towards different funding options. So that's when, that's when I resigned from the council or from the fire department. And um we started pursuing funding options as a city, not as an agency for the firehouse.
City bonded for the building and owns the building that the agency did, is that the way it works?
And the agency leases it, the agency leases it back. With making a payment as well as the city. The city's making an extra payment above and beyond what they're paying to the agency. For that building. That was just a commitment that the council made.
Yeah.
To to get a new. What we decided to do. Um it was above and beyond what we're giving to the agency. Um it was a commitment that I I'm very proud of our council for making. Um we we used um, we're using uh local option sales tax to pay for that bond, so.
Question?
Yes, I have two more questions.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, um so how um it looks like there's one city rep and three township reps. For this for the full in twenty eighty, you can see, how many townships do we, this is a question for our people, I guess, how many townships do we have here in ours?
Six.
Six, okay, so it it like if a majority is required to to make anything to happen, it looks like for Solon. You know, their city rep would mean maybe two other people to vote with them and then like that thing would be passed. But in West Liberty, if we had one person from the city and six people from the townships. I could see some people saying, oh, then the city won't have enough, you know, veto power, won't have enough vote to say, you know, to make sure that we. Pass things in the city's best interest. I don't, is there any concern about like not having enough of a say for the city?
Steve, you wanna answer that because uh if you just think about pure population. I mean, our our three and a half townships have more population than the city, but I I don't think that that was ever a big concern.
We're more active and split anyway, so it's it wouldn't be, ours wouldn't be set up in the same structures as this, because we're. Basically township city, because that's kinda how our call was set up, just just to kinda feed that in, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
So one of the questions I guess I would have in your situation would be is of your six townships, are you covering six? Full townships or six chunks of townships? You following me? How many complete township?
Parts of some of the townships holds of what, two?
How many do you cover full that are full, like complete townships?
Two, I believe.
Okay, cuz.
The fire district is that different than the townships? So it's only two, I didn't realize that, it's only two. Full townships and then partials of the other four, okay.
Okay, so we had that same situation, so we cover three townships and the city. And then we cover Graham Township, okay? And Graham Township is a contract. So so we Graham contracts with with the Soul and Tri Township Fire Department. To cover a section of Graham Township. So your agency would actually be the two townships and the city. I mean, that's how you could set that up and then your other towns, your other townships that you're providing service to. You would, your agency would just form an agreement. To cover their areas for the same cost, right? You would figure, you would have them pay the same amounts. And and uh you would cover that cost. Now, if they're expecting a a full vote. That's probably not gonna fly when you they're only covering a a percentage. They're not a full hundred percent member, if you will, of, because they're not gonna have a hundred percent. Funding into the agency, right?
I don't know if you, do you wanna jump in and just explain kind of the way that our proposed structure is since since there is a fire district that's been created, which I think. Can stay intact is my understanding. Uh if if a uh agency were to be created and then our our idea would was that that would be. That fire district basically feeds into half. Of the agency and the city does the other half, is the way we've been talking about it. I don't know if you wanna speak to that at all or.
Yeah, we're, the the structure we have discussed on setting up will have equal representation between the city and the rural. Now, because we didn't, we didn't wanna have one side have more. Say than the other. That's been part of our problem in the past.
So is your, so is your fire district, i- is it a voted on? Is it, is it voted on by your, everybody that lives outside of the city in the district? Have you like created it legally in the state? Because you can do that, did you know that?
Understand your question.
So so in, one of the things you can create legally is a a fire district. So.
We have a fire district.
Well, that's my question, is it recognized by the state of Iowa as a fire district? Meaning that all your people in your fire district vote? Vote, like go to the voting booth and vote on who your representatives are gonna be for that fire district?
They vote for the township trustees.
So so are they voting for township trustees or fire district uh members? Okay, so that so it's so it's not a true fire district, then it's a it's a fire district. See what I'm saying, there's a difference, so there so.
Fire department needs to explain about the fire district setup.
No, but what I'm saying is, is that there's a s- you, there's the tape of the state. One of the things that we could have chosen other than an agency was to create a fire district. And if you create a fire district and that would have included the city of Solon as well as all of the townships. Then that fire district would have, you you would set up however many. Voting members are gonna be and you would elect those. Uh district, fire district um members that, and that's who, that's who administers. Your your fire department.
Be on the ballot where you vote for uh township trustees, um. Fire district representatives.
Townsfolk, gonna be a fire district, yes.
President, yeah, right.
Yeah, they're gonna vote for, you're gonna vote for no more than, if your fire district had three fire district representatives. You would have a e- each, each person that is in your voting, in your fire district. Whether you're in the city or out in the county, it would say vote for no more than three people for fire district. You may have ten people run for your fire district, but there's only gonna be three, three people on that board or four people or five, however you designed it, right?
I think my understanding was that we are, the fire district, the rural fire district is set up that way as a legal entity with legal representatives, but is it not set up that way? Where it's voted on like that? I guess I don't know.
Well, yeah, I guess I don't know, that that's why I said I think the fire department needs to explain about how. Are the area you guys cover has been determined and and, you know, such, because I'm not sure.
That's all been done by accounting. It's set up that coverage area according to. They can do all this logistics, all that kinda good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, you. Yeah, it was back like Johnson County did way back whenever they decided who was gonna go to what, who was gonna cover what areas, right? So it's the exact same thing, so.
They do vote on who represents each township.
Right, so you have township trustees, so you have the same setup as what we used to have. So so your situation is, is you have as a we- as the West Liberty Fire Department. You have several chunks of different townships that you cover. Other than two full townships. So when you develop your, if you're gonna go with the agency model, you're gonna have to do, you're gonna have to make a decision. When you develop it is, are you going to, are you going to have? A a bunch of members and and if you have a bunch of members. One one of the things we didn't want to do when we when we made our agency is, we didn't wanna have. A bunch of members and then it took forever to get anything accomplished.
Right.
And you know, the more, if you have, if you have fifteen people there. All having a vote, it's gonna be difficult. They're all gonna have a different way of doing it. When you have four people sitting in the room, you're able to talk about what is best. You, you know, you you do those, you you set up those type of um, you know, like. We're gonna be working on purchase order type stuff at our next meeting and how we're gonna sell the equipment. That we no longer need, you know, uh uh processes for that, because we just don't have anything. Concrete on on how we do that stuff and we need to do that, so. You know, if you had fifteen people having an an idea, that would be a lot to work through every meeting and you probably wouldn't get much to accomplish.
Mr. Mayor, um that that we're interested in pursuing and and we did take that into consideration. We didn't want. Twenty people trying to decide what needed to be done, so.
Yeah, but I think you have to decide how how big you want this board. I mean, how I I, you know, you're you're. You're gonna have to get together with your, all your townships and decide if you can. If you can get get that down to uh. A more, a a smaller group maybe, I don't know, I I mean.
Pretty well already decided that.
One of the things that helped us keep on track is um we developed a transition plan. And I worked with the county attorneys and it was really just an administrative flow chart. And we, you know, we established we were going to, there was a lot of pieces to this. Charter that had to be decided and so we broke it down into pieces and we said, okay, we're gonna spend the next three months working on this piece. And we really broke it down um to make it it just a little more manageable, a little easier. It was a lot less overwhelming. Um George Oster was able to kinda give us some guidance on how to how to approach that. Um but I think, you know, we started in a really overwhelmed spot as well. And, you know, administratively, we just had to look at it. From an administrative view and say, we need to accomplish this by this time. And to keep the process moving, so that might be something that that can help you get through the process as well.
House member wanna?
And it was, took a long time. I mean, it didn't, I mean, we spent. We spent a full Saturday there. We were there for, oh gosh, six hours, five, six hours, one Saturday. Um and then, you know, several other meetings, I mean, it's, it's it's not gonna happen in ten minutes, you know.
How long was the entire process start to finish, when from when you said, let's do this to uh launching?
Well, Cam, you could look back, we could get that answer for you by looking at when the audit came out.
Roughly, I guess, I'm. Was it a year, two years or six months?
It was well over a year.
Yeah.
Probably eighteen months.
Between one and two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, we had our first meeting with George Oster in um late two thousand fifteen. And um and, you know, we had to, like as as Mayor saying, shared. It we had, we had no choice. We were feeling the pressure from the state auditor. We had to push pretty hard. Um so once we got that direction from um Mr. Oster. And just made the decision on the on the agency format, we then created that transition plan and decided. Exactly what we needed to have done, um and we had a goal of one year. Um and I believe we did it and actually just just a little bit under.
I have one last question. Is there a set of bylaws or any other documents that goes with this charter agreement or is it all here in the charter?
We have a set of bylaws, we um.
Brought those?
We have a sep- separate set of bylaws we can get to you.
Okay, is it the the board of directors, the four-person board of directors write those bylaws or did you make the bylaws before, like at the same time that you signed the charter?
Oh, we have a, the board of directors has a, has some bylaws, we'll we'll um. Well, I'll get, I'll get you what we have.
They did it themselves and kinda went off of past history.
Charter first, bylaws after, okay, cool, that's all I got, thank you so much.
That would be good to have and I don't know.
I, I got that email to you.
For the, the bylaws?
Oh, the charter.
Oh, the charter. Yeah, are we? Okay.
So you'll have the full charter.
Okay, cause we were missing a couple of things here. Okay, so we have that.
One other piece of information I wanna, I want you to just look at is last year the state changed some laws that allows for counties, schools, cities to join to uh, to make these types of agencies to be able to bond, to be able to, you know, um, so like counties that can't afford a new jail could join together and have their own, a, a joint sheriff's office, a joint jail, a joint school system. You know, there may be new opportunities that we didn't have in two thousand and fifteen that were just created that may help you in forming this. So it would behoove your city attorney to check out what those state laws changed last year because it may make it a lot easier for you as well. Because I, there was a lot of language around that last year.
One of the questions that we have here in the room for uh, anybody.
I have lots of questions that I wanted to let other.
Any other questions, council? Yeah, go ahead Dana.
Um, so the agent, at the agency, at the fire department, on the day-to-day, who receives the, the bills and pays the bills?
So, right now, I would say ninety-five percent of them come to, come to us, the firefighters, our fire chief. And then he's able to designate, if it's an operating expense, fire hose or is it lighting? You know, heating or stuff like that. So, but in that way, as, as the manager of the year-to-year budget, day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year fiscal year budget, he can, he has first sight of that, knowing that we're still on budget doing what we need to do. Then he passes it on to our, to our agency secretary. She has seating, helping with this, but she can write, pay any bill under a thousand dollars. If it's over, over a thousand dollars, then the agency um, treasurer has to approve it. So there's two eyes on it.
Yeah, is that how we have it set up, Mindy? Already based on what they were doing, right? But we had a five thousand dollar thing.
For, for expenses that were greater than that, yeah, there's a treasury supervisor that app, that also audits um, bills that are being paid and also for cash. The treasury supervisor comes in to play more on, more with the, with seating of cash coming in so that we have a good subdivision of duties. With who's handling what with cash being coming in.
And then is your fire chief volunteer? Volunteer? Is there any paid EMS volunteers? Nobody's paid. So.
We're, we're, we're paying a stipend. Alright, so our fire chief, yes, so I'll back up. Our fire chief, assistant chiefs and captains receive a stipend, but it's not a, and it's a year-to-year deal. It's not based on you did stuff this month or that month. It's all predetermined. I mean, actually part of our operating budget.
And so are, and this is just fire, not EMS. Okay, so we'll, we'll talk about that. Um, what about insurance? Like, was there a change? Like, right now our volunteers are all covered by workman's comp. They're covered by the city's insurance. When the agency started, how did that change? Um, if, if at all on like an insurance coverage?
So we.
Done by the agency, right?
The agency has to pay the workman's comp. Uh, the, so, the, the officer salaries are, I think the chief's six or seven thousand a year and the, the assistant chiefs are six or five. It's around that range. Um, but.
It's stolen now, guys. What you do here? That's higher than here.
And then.
For the budget, it's not above and beyond.
Pay all the, we pay all the workman's comp and all of that, which is, it is a very expensive bill. Um, we have on-call uh, night. We had problems getting people to respond. We run so many calls that we had problems getting people to respond at night. Um, so they did it on-call night. Um, pay where, we, we guarantee four people uh, at night. Um, twenty-four, seven, or seven days a week. Uh, from Greg, what are the hours on that?
Hours are, are ten PM to five AM, six AM.
And those people are paid twenty dollars a night, period. Whether they go on ten calls or none.
You sign up, you're on the roster and you get that stipend automatically.
Yeah. Now, all of that increased the workman's comp. So. Sorry, I have a barking dog that I have to keep muting now. Um, so, so that is part of the um, challenge that we're going through right now is, is that our workman's comp is, is climbing. Um, and all of those administrative salaries uh, goes against that, raises that workman's comp. I think when we, when the city had it, it was a lot cheaper, but our expenses weren't near as much either. Um, we didn't have near the expense uh, pay-wise that we do now.
What do you think Steve? We probably double our call volume in three years, right? I mean, I, I think that's pretty safe, safe. That's.
Right, right. Yeah.
How many hours does the, cause you have like a clerk that works for you in the, in the agency, right? How, just roughly, cause I, that's the plan here too. And we don't really know how much time that would take. Just roughly, how many hours does that person work?
Their secretary. I think they, he said they had a secretary.
Okay.
So our, so our, we have a contract. So the agency has a contract with the city of Solon. So our city clerk also performs the agency clerk duties. Um, we charge an, we charge the agency an hourly rate and um, I would say that, and we bill, and we bill the agency quarterly for that. Um, uh, our clerk keeps a timesheet of the hours that she spends on agency work and agency meetings. And I would say that it averages, um, I would say about um, you know, three to five hours a month. And that's on the high side.
That does not have to be a city employee, but um, it, it, it made it much easier. Um, all the, you know, the oversight was there. Um, it, it just, it, I don't know if we, it, you would probably, the only other way that would be, that would work, that would give everybody a peace of mind would be to have an accountant do it, you know.
Other questions Dana?
Let me just take a quick look. And so, but just to get the right, the city still owns the building. The equipment, is it dated to the agency now? It's all dated to the agency. And so you, the agency is, is, is responsible for workman's comp as well as I'm assuming maintenance, insurance for the vehicles. Um, do they also have to have uh, like a rental insurance for leasing the building from the city? So the city provides.
Our situation is a little unique just because the, of, because of the bond that we have on the building. The um, once the bond is paid off, then the building will belong to the agency.
Oh, got it. Okay.
For the building, correct?
The agency's making a seventy thousand dollar a year payment on the building. The city's making a payment on the building. And the firefighters raised a million dollars for the building.
One point two million.
So, so.
Yeah.
Exactly. So at the end of it, the agency will own the structure for, I think we have to pay them a dollar. The agency has.
Our situation, since our building isn't, I mean, it's paid for, right? Then we, in our situation, it would make sense to just have the agency own the building.
And then they're responsible for it.
And then they'll be responsible for insurance and paying corporate taxes, I assume.
And then, and then maintenance on it, right? Cause the other option you could, was lease, right? I mean, it depends who owns your equipment and how you buy into all that. That was part of our issue was, is the city had to buy in because the, you know, the trustees had so much money invested in all these trucks. We didn't have that to, to bring to the table. So, we brought the building to the table and we brought some cash to the table as well. At the beginning.
So, doesn't, I'm sorry Dana.
I was just gonna ask if they've had questions. That's what you were gonna.
Well, I, I, I have asked and I will ask again. If you have any, get them ready. I do have one while everyone's thinking. Um, I just about the relationship between, so, is the agency, cause I think there's been some confusion here and definitely in my mind about the relationship between the Volunteer Firefighter Association. And like right now, there's a Volunteer Firefighter Association, which is kind of separate but attached to the West Liberty Fire Department, the Department of the City. Um, so how does that look in your situation now? Is the agency, is that one and the same with the Volunteer Association or is there a separate entity?
That has absolutely zero to do with the agency. Greg can speak completely on.
So, so I can speak directly to that. We are our own entity, five oh one C three. But we are directly responsible as a group because of what that five oh one C three says to provide manpower, people power to run the show.
That's similar then, how, how we were talking about setting it up.
We all get along.
So do you have a contract with the agency? You just. It's just me.
Don't worry about it. I mean, really, I, 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 I think in the end, going through the billing process, our, our new billing, we learned a lot about everybody. Cause there were questions, you know. The city had to give a little bit. The trustees had to give a little bit and we had to jump in hook, line and sinker. Because if, if we didn't jump in, then the other two, why are we jumping?
Right.
So it really, in the end, egos were checked at the door, questions were asked, they were answered fair square with a great understanding. And we're humming.
I think, too, there's a couple scenarios that haven't played out. I mean, financially, it's a completely separate thing. The firefighters, um, they are managed by the chief. But we haven't had to deal as an agency with any discipline issues. If we had a s- a serious issue that the agency board members felt wasn't being dealt with, that's when I think problems would, may, may come to us where we, we may have to come together as a board and city to, to talk with the firefighters if that ever presents itself. We, it just hasn't. We've been so fortunate, like Greg says, we've all gotten along.
Yeah, that's a, that's a gift.
So.
Way to put it. It is, in our world today.
Well, I think that. Yeah, you do have to somewhat prepare for that. I think, um, like, I, you know, the agency does have to approve the chief and the chief officers. So if discipline wasn't being met or there is a management problem or let's say, you know, spending or something crazy was going on that the agency had to stop that behavior or somebody commits a crime, that's a, that's a uh, chief officer, we're gonna have to take action as that agency, whether the, whether the membership wants it or not. We're in charge of providing fire service for, the agency board is ultimately responsible for the whole operation.
Like, that's the way it's written here where the, the, the fire has broad authority to manage the department, appointment dismissal, personnel training, care of equipment, firefighting, et cetera, et cetera. But then, um, you know, it all does flow back to the board, basically.
Right. So if we would have a serious situation happen, the agency board does have the authority to make changes if necessary. Now, there's always that political fallout that happens when you, when you, you know, mess with volunteers, right? But unfortunately, sometimes those situations present themselves and we have to do what we have to do. As a mayor, you, you totally get that. Um, so what you have to do is, is you, you, you get your fire department and your, everybody on board that, hey, here's our expectations, right? And these are some of the things that we're gonna have to do while we all get along too. These are some of the goals that we're gonna have as an agency while we're all getting along. That, there are some things that we have to hold all of ourselves accountable to. Right? So, um, that's.
I'm sorry if I wasn't more clear earlier, but any questions from anyone in the room that you uh, wanna ask? I've just, it made, you, you made it sound like I wasn't, didn't say that clearly enough earlier.
I was just looking, looking more towards like maybe Mindy or Eric, what things have come up as in the task force and stuff like that, that maybe we didn't have answered. I have a good list and I think a lot of my stuff has been answered. Um, the only other question I had was basic, hopefully the only other question was like the transition. Like I heard Kami say that you all had a transition plan. I think that was one of our sticking points on the task force is how do we do that transition? It sounds like the charter was established and then how, like, how was the, how did that work? Where it's like, okay, uh, here's our members for the board and.
I, I, I think, once you, once you get the nuts and bolts, expectations of the trustees, you guys, the firefighters, I think the transition will set itself in place.
We, so.
I'm happy to send over our example that we used. You know, it's not gonna be perfect. It's not gonna be an exact match to your situation, but it might give you an idea of how to create a transition plan for your situation.
Yeah, in the city, to, to make it short is, is each township chose a, a person that want, they wanted, who they wanted to represent them. And each, and then the council did the same. And then, um, like when we have big votes, like, like buying a million dollar pumper, those township trustees, they wanna go back before they vote. They wanna have a, they wanna talk to all their trustees and those, all of those trustees show up for that meeting. And, and then we'll pause, we'll pause the meeting while they break out and go talk and tell their member how they're gonna vote, right? So.
That's how you do it all in one meeting. You, you discuss the issue, the trustees break off, make their, have their conversations and then their representatives come back and vote. That's interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so that they still feel like they, they're in control, right? Of how the each, each township has the ability to, to tell their member how they want them to vote, right? So, so that, that's how they chose to do that. Now, if uh, like Graham Township, they send one guy and he just says, how much do I need to write the check for this?
Y'all wanna be Graham Township.
Um, you know, and then you, you may have, you may have one or two show up from one township and then there's another township where everybody that's elected showing up. You know, so, and that's great, right? It, it's all on who, who wants to be there and how involved they wanna be. It, it's totally up to them, but at the end of the day, they get one vote. So however they wanna work that out amongst themselves is up to them.
How often do you review the, because your payment structure is, um, well, I don't know. I'm not even sure quite how to answer, ask this question. The, the way you have it set up is, let me ask it this way. Everyone knows what they're supposed to pay in, they pay it in. That's what the agency has for a budget. They operate within the budget. And that's it. Is there any like, oh, we need to, we, 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 we need more to operate and so we need to review this and you know, when do you, when do you review that amount, I guess is my question?
So, so what we did is, is the, the easy way to do that is everybody's paying the max, right? So if you're, so the trout, the trustees, from what I hear, are already taxing the sixty and three-quarters, it sounds like, from your group. So, um.
The townships are taxing that and paying a hundred percent in.
Yep. Okay. So then, so then what Kami does is she takes, uh, our taxable evaluation and she figures sixty and three, sixty and three-quarters cents on that, on, on what that would be for fire protection, and that's what the city of Solon pays, correct, Kami?
Oh, you're muted, Kami. We can't hear you.
Yes, every, every, the city and the townships each pay the exact same amount, sixty-seven and three-quarters.
So, so that is shared at budget time every year. Here's what the city's bringing in, here's what the townships are bringing in. And then I, I think the townships get quarterly payments, so they turn those in and when the city gets their payments, we turn that into the agency and every agency meeting. The total amount that is sitting in all the accounts is discussed. What is, what is, uh, the, you know, what is the operating budget? How much is in the operating budget? How much is in the, the one checking account? How much is in CDs? We talk about upcoming truck purchase in four years. How much is that gonna cost? What do we got set aside for that? You know, any other big-time purchases, um, you know, all that stuff is discussed. Uh, every meeting, uh, we talk about what we have sitting where and what's coming in. But yearly, everybody shows what's coming in. Um, and it's public record, first off, so nobody's trying, nobody's gonna, you know, give something that isn't true because it's all public record. Um, but it, it, it's all right there and everybody knows what they have. The firefighters know what, what the agency has for money. So, you know, there's, there's, there's no secrets. There's, there's no, it, it is what it is, right? So.
Overall, it's the agency's responsibility to budget for those whatevs, to set money aside for the trucks, to set money aside for that. Um, it's not a goal to spend every dime.
You have to have reserves built into the budget.
But that's the agency's responsibility to budget that.
Right.
Right.
Well, it sounds like.
But the pumper's a million dollars. If, if, if you don't save for ten years, I mean, like for us, you know, that's a ten-year, twelve-years savings for a new truck. So, we're gonna, you know, that's a, that's a lot of money. Um, you know, we just spent seven hundred thousand this year on a new rescue truck. Uh, we got a new pumper. We're gonna be buying in what, five years, Greg? Four years, something like that? So, uh, that's gonna be close to a million. So, you know, um, it, it takes a lot of money and you definitely have to, you, you have to have a vision. You cannot live in the now with money for the fire department.
And if the, the, the five oh one C three, say, one agency say, hey, we just got a ten thousand dollar check and we wanna add that, how does that work?
So, so I'll give you a great example. It just happened. We had, we had a family dumped forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars in our lap, our, our agency's lap. The agency turned around in union with the board, bought a brand new pickup.
So that was donated to the agency or to the five oh one?
To the five oh one C three.
Okay.
And then because we bought it, we turned it over to the agency, it's theirs now.
Okay, gotcha.
And they, they've got a little additional expense above and beyond that for lighting and stuff like that that they agreed to, to do it, but they looked at it as a ray for Hollywood.
Yeah, that sounds like.
And what we do as, as an association, if something comes up, like we just bought fifteen thousand dollars of the grain bin rescue stuff that people gave to us for specific things. Again, we'll buy that stuff, let the agency know we purchased that. It, it's, it's a great working relationship.
But you retain ownership of that then, or you?
No, no.
Give it over to the agency?
We, we, it's theirs.
Yeah, so anything that you, that, that for some reason, the officials want to keep.
Yeah, I guess the, the best way to think about it.
Have to keep track.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor's, is we're the vehicle to help that along, so we're not eating up budgeted money.
Sure, right.
You know?
Yeah.
But. Once that vehicle comes, I mean, so the agency owns a vehicle that we're selling to help cover the costs. So we have, we have, uh, an older excursion that we're going to be selling that we're hoping to get somewhere between, you know, fifteen and twenty thousand dollars to help offset the other twenty thousand dollars in expense that's gonna be there. But when it comes time to get rid of the, this new pickup, that's an agent's, that money, when it's sold, doesn't go back into the coffers of the, of the benevolent, it stays in the agency.
Right. I see what you mean.
We turn everything over.
You just feed in.
Otherwise, it's co-mangling the funds and that's the problem. So. It's the same with how they did the fires nation. They wrote a check to the city in the amount of one point. Well, however, however you.
Well, I didn't know if you wrote it for one point two million or if you wrote it for a million and then there were other expenses that you put on top of.
No, no, one point two million went direct.
Yeah, so, um, because I know there's been a, there's been other agents to the building outside of that. So, um, but that being said, is it was the same thing, is they wrote the check to the city. So, that's what they do, the same thing. They write it to the agency or, or gave it, gifted it to the agency because there's insurance. You know, licensing, all, all of that stuff has to go under the agency.
Yeah, good. Questions? Ashley gives a thumbs up. Okay. Well, I feel like we could probably talk for hours here, um, but this has been very good, I would say. Um, so, thank you for joining us. Um, we likely will have more questions for you. I don't know if you'd mind if we, uh, reach out and kind of keep an open line of communication. I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. But, you know, George Oster helped us, um, so George isn't capable of doing that. Um, so, I feel I owe it to, to George, uh, George was a huge, um, part of the fire tool and the fire service. And I owe it to George to do nothing but help carry that torch. So if you need me to attend another meeting, I'll be there, whether I'm the mayor or not. I, I, I may not be the mayor in a couple of months. But I have a lot of history with it.
But I appreciate that.
To, uh, help you in any way that you need.
Thank you. Well, and it sounds like you have good, um, good help out of the gate to go to, to, to George Oster and sounds like that was your first step.
Yeah, same. I'm happy to help in any way.
Great. Thank you so much. Good to meet you, Mayor. Good to meet you. Kami, thank you so much, Greg. Appreciate you being here and, uh, I'm sure we'll have a lot more questions.
I, I wish you great success. I, I, I think it'll be a good thing for your, for your volunteers and your city and, and, uh, community.
Absolutely.
Have a nice.
We agree. Thanks so much. Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna continue with our city council meeting in about a half an hour, so we'll just take a, uh, take a break here, council. And, uh, convene again at seven thirty. And thanks, everybody, for being here.